So this is Holly Ettinger. She is with the PA CPAS program for clean energy. Holly and I met a little bit several weeks ago, maybe even two months ago now. And she was sharing with me that there is interest in this process, in this program, from a potential businesses locating in Levitt County. And so she gave me a little bit of a little bit of work on what this program is. And so she got her to go back and talk to you about the program. So, and that's first. Well, that's those are together.
Yeah. So I work for a nonprofit called the Sustainable Energy Fund. We've been around about 20 years doing loans to commercial businesses to help them be their with always more energy efficiency. We've been restricted to PPL territory for those few years, but the last two years, our board directors have really kind of opened our scope. And last summer, the governor and state legislature passed this CPAS program, which is property assessed clean energy. And when they did that, we were the 35th state to adopt the program. It's kind of exists robustly in a handful of states. I'm not listed on here. It came out of California, which they have big energy, have had big energy problems for decades. Connecticut is also a big state, or Georgia, that is, Texas, another state. So when the state legislature looked at it and adopted Pennsylvania, they kind of passed the buck a little and said municipalities, whether they community or economic development corporation, or a county can establish the program. What it does very simply is let a property owner, a commercial property owner, make improvements to their building, or build a building that's more energy efficient, higher performing, and finance that incremental improvement over the long term as part of their property tax bill. So the municipal government would have to act kind of as collection for that assessment payment, but it's to repay a private loan made to a private property owner. For me, that's best illustrated two ways. I'll diagram. In the, in this book, the bottom kind of outlines the process. Basically, a property owner would decide whether they wanted to make improvements on their building. You've probably been approached with the county to make energy savings improvements through an ESCO.
Right, you've done that three times.
Yeah. So the issue with a private property owner is they're not in a position as a county. They're not going to own the property perpetually. And so their, private property owners are hesitant to make that long 10, 20 year investment, and they might outgrow their space in five years. So what this does is give a private property owner the same kind of benefit, a long-term financing that the county has by making it on the, the payment on the property tax and it stays with the property. So if the property owner needs a bigger facility and moves on to a new building, the loan payment for the energy improvements on that building stay with that building, Keystone.
And is it typically like what, like we have done, like municipalities would do through an energy savings where the projected savings will cover the amortization of the loan?
Exactly. And again, when you're a commercial business owner, most banks are going to want the money for that kind of thing like five, seven years. With this program, you can get a loan for 10, 20 years, which is a life of good equipment, like a boiler or something like that. So yeah, a great example is on this page, you can see this is a suburban office building. They made $134,000 investment into their building, and they repay it over 10 years through the CPAS assessment on their property tax bill. The annual payment is $19,000, but they're saving $28,000 in revenue every year. So it's cash flow positive, that $9,000 right from the beginning. And that's really how these deals are structured, that your energy savings pays for loans. This one's probably a little more generous than your average with that $9,000 annual savings, but it's good to have some work up there. So that's kind of the way the program works. Nationally, it's brought about a billion dollars, billion dollars of investment in the last about six years. And your average project is a $250,000 investment in a property. What we did as a nonprofit is kind of put together guidelines and all the legal documents, embedded all that through a stakeholder process and through lots of legal back and forth, so that any county in Pennsylvania who wanted to adopt it would have a starting place. And it would be, we didn't want every county or municipality to have a different set of guidelines. It would restrict the investment. That's what we heard from other states. So what our nonprofit did last year was we kind of helped develop that CPAS in a box. So it's all the documents the county would. We've also been working as a single point of contact for lenders and property owners and developers and municipalities, so that if people have questions about CPAS in Pennsylvania, we kind of can act as a clearinghouse about the program. And what's resulted is, to Jamie's point, we got a call about a project in Levitt County, 81 bed, 81 room hotel, new construction in Jonestown. And they want to use CPAS as a piece of their financing and the capital stack to go back to town. So that's kind of what prompted me to reach out is because we have someone who wants to take advantage of the program and see if we get the ball rolling.
Are you accepting questions or were you not done?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Maybe you said it and I missed it because I, until I got set up here. But is there interest on this loan, so to speak, and how much is it?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So what we're seeing is the average was like four and a half to six and a half percent. So it's pretty much commercial rate.
It's a regular commercial loan.
And is it financed locally?
We have one capital provider based out of Philadelphia, and we have about 10 that are, do work in other states and want to do lending in Pennsylvania.
And the next question would be, you said it goes with the property. So worst case scenario, we've seen properties that go up for share of sale. What happens in an instance like that?
If a property goes delinquent on their taxes, they will most likely need to link on this payment as well. And this payment will get treated, the legislature says it gets treated like a tax. So it would follow along with your property tax delinquency process, whatever that is, you know, the tax sale and then the judicial sale. In, in many cases that you know, that first mortgage holder usually steps in. And when that happens, the capital, the lender of this, usually, they don't have to pay off this whole, so they wouldn't have to pay the $134,000, they would just have to pay whatever the back payments are. And it would just then pick up with the new owner and be an annual assessment like a tax.
There are some where the property goes for a dollar after the share of sale and everything.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. If it got to that, again, if it got to that point where the first mortgage holder didn't buy it themselves, there's a good possibility the lender in this program would buy it as a second, kind of as a second mortgage holder. If not, whoever takes ownership picks up this payment.
Those are, it would be very unlikely, I would say, for a commercial property that has value, even if it has, you know, substantial loans, still has value. Typically, the $1, the $100 bids that we get are on, you know, manufactured housing that's 40 or 50 years old, it's already going to just be removed and then lots going to be used again. I don't recall ever having a commercial property sold for a dollar.
Couple thousand.
Yeah.
No, they're usually blown up like she said, the banks are going to protect their, their asset.
And that's kind of one of the things that I feel like as a community development and a home development person, that this great work is taking kind of those older, like 1980s, 1990s offices and warehouses that are now like 30 years, need new air conditioning systems, need new lighting to make them market ready. This is a really good tool for that, to get those properties being developed and put out.
So there's no way the county is liable for this money if we end up with the property?
Absolutely not. You're not liable for this money. Actually, the indemnification language in the agreement is very strong, and it's one of the things that we strengthened after two conversations with two other counties. So, yeah.
And how many counties have adopted this?
So right now, it's Philadelphia, North Hampton, and Chester. And actually, on September 10th, Allegheny County moved it up there. And I just heard from Lehigh County, they're moving forward with a formal meeting like this.
Question.
Yeah, my, the folks that are interested in building this hotel, have they used this program somewhere else? Is that why they're, they're interested in it or how they found out about it?
I believe they have. I believe they probably built a hotel in Ohio and had this a lender, both the capital provider and the hotel deal is company called Twain. It's a private equity firm, you know, they make private investments, they have their own.
So they have, they have their own lined up?
They have a relationship, they have their own lender. They actually want to close on the loan on October 31st, which I said, that's really, really ambitious.
Have they gotten through the zoning and permitting process or?
I, they just got planning, they're planning approval in the township last month.
I think it's in New Town, New Township, I think.
Will they, will they provide that for us so we know that it's clear?
Yes. And actually, the whole application process, one of the pre-application requirements is we would, one of the things on preapplication is who is the property owner? Do they own any other property in the county? So we, can we do a little due diligence, making sure it's not a bad actor that can move it forward? Once you do that pre-application, then there's a full application, which includes, you know, do you have all your permits and are you ready to go? Yep.
So if I could walk through the mechanics of how I understand the payments to work, and if I could get any of the, we can jump in.
Okay.
So a, what you've gone over so far is a potential either buyer of a commercial property, developer of a commercial property, will start their process, if they're interested in this program, they'll start the process with you. You will hook them up with a lender, they'd already have that lender lineup. They'll, they'll get their loan, they'll, they'll build the project, or renovate the project with these energy savings improvements, included projected savings. It's completed, they're up and running. In 2020, the tax bill comes due and the portion, a portion of their tax bill is the taxes and then, and then a loan payment. So we, we will bill and receive both pieces of that. And then, so we're the payee agent. So then we will forward that payment on to you.
Yeah.
And then you guys make sure the bank is, is paid.
Yeah.
For that, there's an admin, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
A fee that you pay.
And you can get reimbursed for your costs, your administrative costs. And we also, as a nonprofit facilitating, we take a little administratively off of the payment as well. I think right now, you're going to have, it's 250 off a year, totally in charge. We have a closing, I'll be upfront with you, there's a closing cost for the commercial property owner with us to kind of do the application process and all that. It's 1%, 1.25 on a declining scale based on the size of the project, but it's capped at $50,000. So that's a little bit of how, we're going to recoup some of these upfront costs that we've improved. We probably spent over $50,000 to be without my time on legal and consulting.
And how is the county's administrative treatment quantified?
So you would tell us what it would be? Do your calculations internally and decide what, how much administrative cost it was to you and how much is in that?
4%.
More.
I think that's what ours is. All the time.
Annual yearly up payment zero, okay.
And so it would go, it would go as part of our billing? It would behave just like a tax bill?
Yeah.
Because it would be part of it?
Yeah.
And the same due dates?
Yeah.
How does discount flatten penalty work, do you know?
No, I would, no discount.
Okay.
There would be, you can assess the penalties and it goes through interest or what you can.
So it would be, it would be listed because we discount our taxes for early payments, so it would be listed separately and separate due dates?
Yeah.
Probably the same due date, just no discount period.
They pay early, they don't pay them out.
Yeah.
Yeah. But if they pay it late, then there is a penalty back, that's county's penalty.
So the, do you have more information about the project in Jonestown? Lickdale, I think actually is, it's Lickdale, I think it's in that interchange area.
Oh, yeah.
8172. So they're looking to do this, you know, with close in a few months?
Close in a few months.
And it's a new, it's a new build?
Yeah.
Okay. And their investment, do you know any more details?
I think it was a $10 million investment, total project cost.
Okay.
And I think this piece was like two and a half million with CPAS.
Two and a half for the energy?
For the energy stuff.
Are there any solar panels or anything involved in it?
No, it's just super efficient boiler and a heat transfer.
So the, so the more, so the more efficient equipment is more expensive?
Yes.
So the difference between conventional, maybe a conventional HVAC, high efficiency is what they can?
No, actually, they can finance.
Oh, the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. That's the way the guidelines were drafted. You know, when we started writing the guidelines and working with both consultant lawyers and stuff, and we had three stakeholder meetings last year, and about 150 people involved in that. And one of the things we really wanted to have is projects, like we didn't want to go through the trouble of having, doing all this paperwork and then it not resulting in actual investment through the program. So we took some cues from states that are successful.
So your, your agency, your organization, is it, is it the same organization that exists in Ohio and so on? I mean, is this basically a Pennsylvania?
No, we're Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Yeah, we're Pennsylvania. But I'm the youngest of four in my family, and so with this program, I kind of feel the same way because I went to the national conference and I met program administrators from Michigan and Maryland and Florida and got a lot of great free advice from my older siblings. So it was really helpful. So, you know, but we are, we're doing it in Pennsylvania.
And is it associated with the state of Pennsylvania, the government of Pennsylvania?
One of the government did was they passed the statute, and they could have said, Department of Environmental Protection, you're going to manage this program. But I think because of the state budget, they didn't want to take anything. And so they said, okay, we'll pass it, but it's up to the local government to figure out how to run. And we, what we heard from other states is that if we had 67 different counties, it's 67 different programs across Pennsylvania, we wouldn't, we just wouldn't do as much investment. We're just going to be that many projects. And so our board director said, look, we've been doing lending for 20 years, let's try to help make this as, you know, expedite it as simple as possible for the counties. Or municipalities, but I'd rather not deal with 2,600.
And when you refer to the, to the board directors, you're talking about Keystone Energy Efficiency Alliance.
No, our, the Board of the Sustainable Energy Fund.
Okay. Is Kia a subsidiary for this, or some sort of?
They're a partner organization. They actually, were the organization that lobbied to get the statute passed.
Okay.
And they're helping us in the Philadelphia region. So it's a little involved, but I'm, you know, I think it's exciting that there's a project here in Levitt County. I think that anytime we can build a building better than what it's going to be built, I think a lot of times developers, developers will build whatever is the best value for them without actually looking at the long-term costs.
How do you, in a county where, and I realize this is very young, Pennsylvania, but, well, two questions. Chester, Lehigh, Allegheny, Philadelphia, the ones you mentioned, were those all precipitated by an interested party, or did some of them create the program and then, and then there was interest?
Chester was initially, there was a project in Chester, hasn't been forward at this point, but that started the ball with them.
Okay.
North Hampton County, I'll be honest with you, I did community, my family's development in Lehigh Valley for 15 years. So I'm in the commissioners, I'm really director of that development, so.
So you went to them and they created?
Yeah. Allegheny County's been a lot of, in Pittsburgh and education, there's a lot of interest in Pittsburgh, but I don't have a, it wasn't a single project pushing them. But you have to understand Pittsburgh has a very big effort towards environmental sustainability and carbon neutral, and so this kind of helps them get to that goal.
So then, using North Hampton as an example, if you're there, if you have a presence there, but you don't have projects there, how do you market this program? So let's say they move forward and this is one, one project.
Yeah.
How do you then?
Yeah.
Go out and say, hey, folks, this is a great program?
So two things, we are working with the Economic Development Association of Pennsylvania to make sure that the folks doing economic development understand the program. They're going to kind of be a first line of marketing, I think. At least supply information for your website, we can supply as many of these as you feel like you could use. We're talking about doing a marketing campaign once we have maybe five or six counties in the southeast and try to hit that media mark, like this southeast media market. But I'll be honest, what's really going to drive this is the engineering firms, the electrical contractors who get the jobs, the construction companies who get the jobs, the engineering companies who spec the project. Because sometimes this project, for example, was developed by a Pennsylvania company we work with, and the property owner didn't want to make the lighting investment themselves, so they weren't going to do the project. We lent them the money for this just a couple years ago. We lent them the money so the project would happen. So the engineering firms will do a whole scope, and then comes a property owner that's going to look over it. So they're going to be the people selling this program. It's going to be your, like I said, the people who are going to get the jobs, the people who are getting the engineering and design work, and then the lenders as well.
You said that what we're getting is new construction. Can it be applied to existing buildings, in other words, can you retrofit older buildings?
Yeah.
That was not clear to me.
And even in older buildings, if, the thing I like about it is, you know, nothing like new windows to improve the energy efficiency.
Yes.
Yeah. And that, that helps. I mean, we have a lot of old silk mills that have used new windows, so.
And courthouses.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You can also use for farms. So if you're, if you're a farmer and you want to have more independence in your energy bill, and you want to put solar panels on your barn so that you don't have to be beholden to electric company, you can use this program.
When you've been to the national conference?
Mm-hmm.
Since there hasn't been a lot of activity at Pennsylvania, are there any, you know, collection issues? Are there, are there any, you know?
So.
Issues, startup issues or anything like that with municipalities as a collective teething issue, so to speak?
Not that I, not in that way, right? Like some states got slow starts in getting the counties aboard, and then it became very fragmented. And so some states are, like Maryland has a couple counties that are active and then other counties that don't. New York State has a program that had a very restrictive requirement of like, you know, like that 50% energy savings and a real high standard for the energy survey, you know, the engineering that went behind it, and like, nobody just, just want to use the program. So they actually just completely rewrote their New York program. There's been one default, but it was a workout. You know, it was a billion dollars, they have, have one that had to get negotiated. But every state, every county that they collect differently. So that's one thing, it's like, yeah, Michigan does it that way, but we don't do it that way, so, yeah. We'll find our own problem.
So I guess I would need a little direction from you if this program were to suit further, and I can work with Holly to develop the resolution, or you probably have a pretty good template to start with, other counties.
I would just feel a lot more comfortable if I had this one reference, our contact person in one of the other counties name, or, you know, just to give us a little bit of cover that, I think that would be helpful.
Chester County, Younger County?
Chester's at least closer, I mean, in size than, than Philadelphia or Allegheny.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think they're, they may be structured.
Chester is structured the same way, North Hampton, I think, as a county council.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they elect an executive.
Right.
The other thing I'd get for you is like more details about the project.
Well, that was going to be my suggestion, that how open are they now that they're building this and everything? Are they, or is it out in the open?
It is. And they told me I could readily share it with you all in the meeting, but they didn't give me the, all the technicals that they're supposed to, so I'll follow up with you on the intention.
Because I think that's a compelling reason to, for us to be involved if, if they have this project on the board and it's, it's going to fly, and they would like us to support it in this way. I think that's.
One more to that, follow up to that point, if the county says not interested, what options does this builder have or this company have? Go back to a conventional, non-energy savings loan?
Right, they'll probably buy less efficient equipment and they'll probably finance it.
All right. So we'll just, we'll stand by while Holly gets us that information.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you.
Would you like just a few of those?
Oh, yeah.
With me, in case I have somebody interested with assessments department.
Planning. Oh, yeah, and you know, the, on the back of this, it's kind of the steps?
Okay.
Like what you have to do, so if you did want to move towards what you have to know what.
Susage, call.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, how are you doing?
Thank you. I think one of the little lights is saying that.
Yeah, I don't know if the state there maybe just, the larger, the larger lenders, you know, make sure they're, artists that can decide or not can decide.
Well, it definitely increases the cost of the project and the size of a lot of the stuff.
Yeah, or maybe. Okay. Great, it's here. All set for the next?
Yes, sir. I am.
Coordinated here.
It's a different.
Jerks and all.
Good afternoon. So is this the, let me see, are they just making shirts now? Well, mine doesn't have a lot of crap on it. Mine's fine, very impressive. How are you guys?
Good.
We're good. Very good.
Do introductions, I guess, to be sure.
Sure, go ahead, and let me make you proceed.
I'm Greg McCollie, president of the Community Levitt Association.
John Bauer, vice president.
Welcome. Make your pitch.
Well, we're here to request a $25,000 grant towards the money to support the holiday lights one more time. We have made some significant changes in the holiday lights. We were able to successfully negotiate a new price destruction. We were able to secure some generators, which will eliminate another $12,000 of a cost. And we're also looking to move it to the expo center. We believe that the expo center provides a much easier setup for us because that facility is properly electrified throughout the grounds, which solves a thousand problems for us. Our biggest problem last year was keeping the lights on during the rain, of which we had. we had thirteen days. And all those thirteen days, either fell on the Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, or a combination of the all three of those. So, it was rough for us last year because, as it was up in the northeast coast, the most holiday lights are in this section. So, that's what we're, we're here to request. This will be our, this will be our final request. We will not take any more requests. Event has to fly this year or we're, we're, but we felt two years wasn't enough time to get it tested out.
The other part of your fundraising, you know, for you, how are you doing?
What we would like to do with, with this particular grant is we would not, if, if you guys approve us, we would not request the check until we raise this, the additional sixty, or, uh, sixty, sixty thousand dollars. So, that, that is one.
That's, I mean, that's putting skin in the game for you guys. And I appreciate that. We just have, I'm, you know, just speaking freely here, have a bit of a difficulty with the large commitment we've already made because of your stature in our heads, you know, with the good work that you guys do, to go a third round without all these changes, which I think are great. I think, you know, you look at something, you test it, and now you're looking at the expo, and I think that, that makes me warm to the idea of, okay, you know, you took a step back from it and, and the fact that you're not going to go forward unless you get the full complement of funding.
I mean, we had the discussion on our board and that's where we, that's where we ended up. Because it is, it's important that we do it, it's important that we make it successful, and we think it has substantial opportunity to grow as we actually. We believe that down the road, we can create a Christmas market, a multiple weekend event. Not this year, we have other things to get squared away, but we believe that that facility offers so much more potential than we're at. We love the park. The park is a great place to do it, but the facilities just aren't there. And we were not able to generate the revenue we probably could to develop those facilities a little bit more. We did make some electrical upgrades, but not enough to help us with our electricity.
Which also gives us a little cover for our investment there, that it did help with some of the infrastructure at Coleman Park. So, that's another good thing I think we did with, with that, helped with other events that go on at Coleman Park going forward. So, that, that was a good investment for, for that money. I just want to ask, is, I know the first year, or at least my recollection is, first year was volunteer, I'm sorry, it was, yeah, volunteer donation. Correct. Second year was a, some kind of a, you have a cost per car or something. What's the third year looking like in terms of what for you look?
It would be, it would be what we did last, it would be a cost per car, but we do have a plan, our advertising plan is to flood the county with discount coupons and mailings. Because what, what we discovered towards the end, when we knew we were struggling because of leather, is we sent out, how many? Four thousand, five thousand?
It was five thousand.
We targeted five thousand mailings, and it was amazing how many of those folks came. Unfortunately, it was a little too late, but we did try to do the best we could to, you know, get back in game with all the others. And we did discover that the tax are successful.
Now, were those discount mailings?
Discount mailings.
They weren't free, right?
No.
Because I have to refresh your memory a little bit. When it's free, you don't make any money.
Yes. What we, what we found is everybody loves a deal, and so, we had, it was a fifty dollar mission, we sent out a five dollar coupon. And then, we also, at a booth level, as people were going through, we offered bounce backs, gave them another five dollars off if they return. And we actually had one person return eight times. So, it worked, we know it works now, you know, and it takes three to five years for anything to get its, its footing and truly run. That's how long it takes to get your, your system established, so.
Okay. Just tell you why, another reason that I feel this is a good investment to, to consider for us. Lackawanna County, they have it in a park setting. They lose money every year, and they've been doing it for many, many years. They do voluntary contributions at the end of the thing, it's over, they put it away. But Lackawanna County subsidizes it. So, that's the difference. They have an ongoing subsidy of it, so they're, you know, indemnified somewhat from failure. So, that, that's where I'm, you know, we're doing this out of hotel tax money, but I think again, you know, till you guys get the thing, I'm willing to consider it.
I mean, you get approval from, from the fair round board.
From the what board?
From the fair board. Oh, I'm sorry, the Expo Board. You think the fair round, you think the fair.
Are the lights with the same company?
Yes.
That's where we got the concession.
Yes.
And how much of a concession did you?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. And can you tell me, are any of the lights going to be new? Because some of the, I don't know if you'll say, comments that I heard were that there wasn't enough new stuff in our town.
It was a third.
Yeah. He, he has committed that, is it a third? He has committed that a third of the displays will change and rotate out. He has a big selection level.
And how will you keep the public from viewing it from the road?
Well, you can't, you can see that there are lights, but you can't tell where they are. We went out and mapped the course a couple of times, and we drove all different directions to Fairland. We were able to find the course that was pretty close to the, the light from the park most far as we can. Now having to put a secondary road. The problem with the expo is all the roads go, most of the roads actually go out, nothing connects. There's no circle around the, around the property. You can't get from this route to this route without coming back and, you know, for, using the secondary entrance. We wouldn't be using the main entrance at the expo, we'd be using that secondary entrance. And you would come down and you'd circle back through and then up around and then all the way around the back of the building and then back out, and then coming back out of a four hour. Which gives us massive areas of space.
That sounds like a more interior setup. It's not something that's going to be, you know, right at the road.
Correct. You'll see it.
It's going to be back in.
Yes.
That may be an advantage, yeah, because at the park, that was part of the problem. You didn't know the thing was there, you know? Even, even the second year, when you changed.
We were concerned, the reason we changed the entrance to that, to holiday lights in the park is because we were concerned that there'd be backup traffic on seven two, which is tremendously busy there certain times, even early, when most of our customers started coming in. And that's why we did it the opposite way, was to try to keep that traffic off of that road. This way, you turn right and drop down and take it to a certain bar and go up the expo. So, it's really that sort of safe way, safety now.
Do you have any questions?
Well, this is new to me. I, I knew nothing about it, so I will have some additional questions as I think about it, but.
Now, just, so, I want to have the answer to the questions. So, that's where we are.
No, I, I don't have any questions. I just, I want to express the fact that my comfort level with this has improved with the involvement of the Expo Center. And I think there's some positive things that will come out of this in addition to just taking another run at holiday lights and, you know, getting the funding to do that. Because I sit on the Expo Board, I was involved with the discussion, the Expo Board, and, you know, it wasn't something that those guys fell over each other to get in line to accept. You know, it was, it was an interesting discussion, but there was one member of the board that said something that I thought was very appropriate and, and would be of interest to you guys and really helped convince me that, that we're doing the right thing. There was considerable discussion about why should we do this and, you know, are they going to pay us to do this? And of course, Pat Kerwin and Harry said, no, they're not expecting to pay to use the facility and so on. Then they talked about the potential for a, a Christmas festival or something down the road. And then, one gentleman on the board said, well, you know, if we expect the community and other entities in the community to work with us, I think we need to work with them. And to me, that was a, a very telling statement, that somebody was on the Expo Board sitting there thinking about, why should we do this? You know, what's in it for us? And to come to the conclusion that what's in it for us is for the whole community. So, I, I think that's significant. So, it looks very, yeah. So, I'm, I'm on board. I'll, I'll tell you, I'll give it one more shot.
Well, if I may, another question that has popped into my mind, because like I said, I had no time to think about this whatsoever. Apparently, others knew and I didn't. But I guess my biggest question is, in the past, volunteers were sought from the community groups, fire police and all kinds, and promised payment. I don't know.
Well, they weren't promised payment. They were told that they were successful, but they were yes.
Right. And the anticipation was that there would be something coming back for all their time. How are you going to attract volunteers to help? And is there also that same promise of payment if there's a problem?
We've honed, we've honed it down that we don't need a lot of outside volunteers. We wish we would have had tens of thousands of volunteers, and we needed volunteers to direct travel and things like that. Turns out, last year, most of the time, we ran out of four people, five at the most. But that was internal, our, our board stepped out to help with that. But if, if it would grow to the part where we needed lots more volunteers, of course, we would, we would want to share with them. And that's what we're here for. We have to try to make, we, we want to do it as a community project, but at the same time, we have to make some money because we have to support all the other activities that we do. And as everyone knows, membership in all organizations is a driving substantial. And without those member dollars coming, we have to find other alternatives to fund all the projects. Maybe, you know, hanging baskets or, or eighteen thousand dollars a year. And that's all coming directly from our membership fees. That money isn't, and if we people make donations, which we're always grateful for.
That's modest.
It's, it's very modest. It's less than, I don't know, three hundred dollars, four hundred, four hundred fifty a year. So, it's stuff like that. And our parade, we, we are successful in our parade. We're one of the last communities that has a real holiday parade. We are still able to generate support dollars for that, but if that starts to wane, we need another source to keep that thing going because that is our number one. Our holiday stuff is our number one event that we do. So, we're, we're in the same boat as everyone else, scratching for, for ways to find dollars to make up for lost membership.
Was there any hesitation to move it out of the city since it does basically support the city?
There was a lot of hesitation, back and forth. We went back and forth for months on what's the right thing to do. I think one of the things that, even though it's a perception issue, one of the things that, you know, we heard from folks is they're afraid to drive through town and come to the park and drive to the park at night. And we all know that that is a perception issue. You can't beat that perception issue. I don't know how, how widespread that perception is, but people have the perception that the park is dangerous. So, we've all individually walked through there at night alone, just to check on what we're seeing. I will tell you, occasionally, there's a strange person that shows up in the park. I'm not sure how they get in, but.
That's what you're referring to. Okay. Anything else? How do you, how do we go from here, Jamie?
Well, we, we'll, we need a formal application from you, like I've asked. And if there are any questions that are still needed to be answered, if you want to supplement anything, I guess, go ahead and email, that kind of thing, and vice versa. In the meantime.
Do we have email?
We will.
We'll share our fundraising, so you know where we are.
Okay.
And we can see that we raised the money that we said we would raise.
Okay.
And we would not accept, expect a check until we've reached our end of the deal.
Okay.
So, that way, if it's not going to work, we know it's out.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
John Power.
Thanks.
See you guys. All right. We've got one other at two thirty. Maybe spend a few minutes walking through tomorrow's meeting, since we really haven't had a chance because of the paper stuff to develop a, I think it's an agenda, I don't know, for you now, but we can walk through. But I think most of it you already have in hand, once you get your own company. Okay. So, we've got, for children and youth, we've got Erin Moyer coming in with the, this is one of their bigger, bigger responsibilities of projects for the year, and that being the implementation budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty and the needs-based budget anticipating what they're going to need for twenty twenty-one for all children and youth, which includes juvenile placement probation and all of those sorts of things. And you've got a packet on that showing the various categories of those budget, of that budget, and what the county share portion is and so on. Erin can talk about that tomorrow. This is her first time, you know, going at it. She did have, she did have Jim Multry's assistance with developing some of that. Of course, Karen Alonso's been here before through that. There's a victim of juvenile, sorry, victim of crime grant from the Department of, or from the District Attorney's Office that Nicole Eisenhardt will be presenting. Betsy Bowman will be back from her workshop the other week where she talked about those different housing rehab programs and so on, that she's asking for funding on. So, she'll be back to formally request those for the senior home repair program and the access program. I've got, let's see, we've got a couple of liquid fuels. One is an application from Heidelberg Township for a SealCo project, and another is from, actually from John Fitzkey and the transportation folks to encumber some money for our own needs, that being a request for twenty thousand dollars of liquid fuels to be encumbered and set aside for a capital bridge improvement program. That program would be working with Wilson Consulting to develop a comprehensive maintenance strategy for our thirteen bridges. As you've noticed, we have bridges that are, you know, a hundred years old. In some cases, we have minor issues that can turn into major issues. We've got debris catch areas that we really need to take a few steps back and look at our current situation and where we should be in the next five, ten, twenty years with some of these bridges. And so, in order to do that, that, that takes some funding to have the research done and so on by Wilson to work through that. So, we're asking to set aside from our own liquid fuels for our own needs, twenty thousand dollars for that kind of, of a capital study and, and project maintenance. So, what I'd be asking is for you to, if you approve that, then that, that's an encumbrance and sets the money aside that we, that we spend at the completion. I've got a, an M A T P contract for Community Action Partnership, and I have a few grants that Bob Dowd is going to be presenting from Pima, Hazardous Materials Response Fund, and the Radiation Emergency Response Fund. And also, we have, early on, we have a proclamation for Tim Chaffey, recognize his time at that place on the Light Preservation Board since, since that's been, you know, recently stepped down. So, he and a couple of the directors, some staff will be here for a little bit of recognition. And I think that is all I, oh, I've got, I'm sorry, I've got a few hotel tax grant applications. One's, one has a little bit of follow-up. The other two, I think you have in hand, the one is Love Valley Conservancy for the Tower to Town ten miler.
Right.
So, we received that from Maury Crawford Conservancy for that, for that event. They're requesting forty-five hundred dollars in grant on an eight thousand dollar promotion project. And then, Love Valley Poultry Fancyers, we have a Love Valley Poultry Fancyers poultry show coming up, and this is the reason, is that they are looking for some money for tourism promotion, an amount of four thousand dollars on a fifty-five hundred dollar project. And I have follow-up from Trailways.
I was struck by the number of states that participate. I mean, in terms of coming from outside Love County, I mean, that's quite amazing.
Yeah, as far away as Indiana, fourteen states, as far away as Indiana. And then last is a follow-up. Some time ago, you had asked for a little more information. Trailways Sports Club, Inc., has held, last year, that was their first year, for a Drag Fest indoor drag racing show at the Expo. And you had given them some money toward that program last year. They have applied again, and at the time of their application, you had asked if there's any information on their out-of-state draw. Can they provide any data on that? They don't have any necessarily spreadsheets or anything showing that, but their, Andy Goodman of Goodman Enterprises did send me an email in reply, and gave a nice list of, and had some narrative on the states that they draw from, how large the program is and so on. So I'll share that with you later.
At some point, can we maybe have a meeting, or just, I don't know what the best format would be, to talk about CLA, not anything to do with this particular thing, but just to say, hey, you know, they're a pretty good-sized entity in terms of tourist promotion. And like the flower thing, for example, I think that presents Lebanon as good as you can for the thousands a day that go through that from outside, they get a good impression, you know, those kind of things. If there's a way that instead of having them apply for, you know, parade and for different pieces that they do throughout the year, if we could just help them in one, you know, budget commitment, you know, that they would have a way of seeing what, you know, their future looks like a little bit earlier when they put their budget together, knowing that we're going to be in for X number of dollars, and then they're on their own for all these other events that they want to do, and make sure that they're funded or they're profitable or sustainable themselves. But we're taking most of their money from their membership just to do those flowers, you know, so they're starting the whole right off the bat.
Yeah, and the membership dues only sixty dollars or something for membership.
So you're looking for some sort of a dialogue?
Conversation, yeah. And I don't know that it should come out of our ten percent, but I'm just saying, I asked Sally for some numbers, and it's pretty healthy, the corpus of that fund, probably close to half a million by the year's end is what's going to be there. But, you know, when you look at what we do for, and I think it's wonderful that we have broken out the DMO and the Expo, because that keeps them viable. And then the ten percent that we have, something to say in, I'm not sure about what we do, you know, as far as part of that, but we certainly could take small enough, fifteen thousand dollars or something a year for.
Yeah, there'd be, I mean, there'd be two ways to do it. You could either, as you mentioned, those entities that get a fixed amount, but that adds to a hundred percent. So if you were to change that at all somewhere, you know, it would have to come out and send some through there. Alternatively, you just do a standing grant, you know, and then you have some flexibility to say, look, you know, times are tough, or, you know, but you could just maybe establish it and let that amount just continue until it changes potentially.
Well, yeah, I'm very conservative. And I feel, as I just said to you earlier, we had the highest-
Oh, yeah.
-hotel tax in August that we've ever had in the county. We're going to have, it sounds like, two new motels, or hotels, and this, our share for the month of August is around fifteen thousand dollars. So I think we're going to be, you know, if the whole thing holds together, the whole country and the whole world, but I think we're going to be pretty well-funded.
About those two hotels, that's a hundred and seventy beds roughly.
Yeah.
New beds. And that has to help the venues for Expo, attracting bigger venues, which you get a certain number of beds.
As you are, and I'm sure I'm okay to share this, but they're actually, the Expo Center is actually working with the folks from the hotel over there to put together workshops and things, because the Expo has the meeting rooms, which these hotels now do not. So they're actually going to work together on sales to put together events where they'll stay at the hotel, have meetings over at the Expo. So I think it's, you know, it's kind of all together for us in tourism.
So if you want to have a conversation sometime, I don't know if that would be your head.
No, I thought, it's just internally, just a different way of supporting CLA. I mean, they're vital to the city, they do programs, I mean, they do a lot of events. And it's just that they're a small group, and for them to constantly be trying to put together, hey, we need four hundred thousand for that, we need five thousand for that, just say, hey, look, start your budget with a, you know.
They're not going to be able to do the best, I understand.
Right. Trying to raise money from the same people.
Yeah, yeah.
If we do something for the CLA, will the Chamber also expect something? Maybe some similar things?
I believe it's, the, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for them, but I think it's a different kind of organization. The Chamber has a higher due structure, and they provide services to the businesses. Whereas CLA is pretty much a self-contained community organization. It's possible, I mean, I'm sure, everybody interacts, everything, so, you know.
I think they're in a different category than, in terms of tourism, than the Chamber. And also, you know, they're a community, they're not just a city, but they certainly have an impact on the county seat.
Yeah.
In terms of people driving through it.
There are, for, you may drag, and I see people go in there looking for tourism information. So because they have more traffic by their facility than the actual tourist bureau, I think that they are like an adjunct tourist bureau, just because of their location and disability. And that's why-
The next generation.
I was just talking about my observation of CLA, if it doesn't go anywhere, it's fine, but I just wanted to throw out, as I'm seeing that we have a healthy balance, and we have, while the momentum is going, let's capitalize on it.
So we could, we could follow the budget discussion, and whether we do the revenue for hotel tax, and then if we were to have a good work budget, we'd have that.
We're going to work from three to five, so that the next year is this.
All set? What is that?
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? Good, how are you?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Thanks so much for being here to talk with all of you. I actually, I remember me appreciating folks individually, so it's good to get it all out in one place.
Yeah.
I had reached out to Kuscher Phillips a couple of months ago, just to give an update, as one of many long-time supporters of SARC in our organization, and the work that we do. And just to talk about some of the issues and challenges that we can least say related to loss of funding through United Way. And one avenue that he encouraged me to explore a little bit further was whether there was a possibility of asking for additional funds through the county to support SARC's crisis response and prevention work in the community. And so before submitting a formal letter requesting inclusion of SARC services and budget, I wanted to just get in front of you and see if there's any possibility for additional funds, and give you the opportunity to ask me questions about SARC and our services to survivors of sexual violence in the community, and the work that we're doing. I think it's pretty powerful.
Jamie, what is the number, eighty-five hundred?
I think so, yeah.
That's what we were talking about.
Do you know how many years we've been at that?
I don't.
Twenty. Probably twenty. It was, I think it started as a hotline expense, or sorry, it's a hotline that directly attributed to that at this point in time.
So it had been attributed directly to the hotline for probably nineteen of those twenty years. When I came, which was probably my third week in at SARC in twenty seventeen, and talked with you about that request, I believe you had encouraged us at that point to ask for support for general services instead of hotline-specific. And so my request in twenty eighteen was to support our crisis response services. So our crisis counseling, hotline support, and legal and medical accompaniments to survivors of sexual violence, and that might happen at court, at police stations, hospital settings. We're available twenty-four hours to help support folks in the community.
I have two questions, if I may. Your staff, I don't know, so many years ago compared to today, and also the number of clients served so many years ago compared to today. What is, has it been stagnant, going up, down? Can you give some kind of a?
Yeah, so I think in terms of clients served, we generally see it as an increase from year to year, a slight increase in terms of direct services. We've added some new positions and some new services, so I expect to see some slight shifts in the work that we're doing in the years to come. So to give you an example, we added therapy as a component of the services that we provide, whereas before, it was sort of short-term and crisis counseling-related. Now we have, like, some social workers on staff who are able to provide therapeutic intervention.
I'm just, I'm not sure if that, the way I was listening to the question was, like, can you just take a snapshot of whatever-
Or the trends.
Twenty years ago, you had ten staff, now you have thirty staff, or whatever, you know, to say, gee, when we started giving eighty-five hundred, how does that relate to the numbers that you're seeing and the numbers of employees? How's that changed? Not necessarily incrementally from one year to the next, but how, since we started that, where are we today?
Or even, I don't know how long you've been in your position now, is it five years yet?
No, it's been two.
I don't know how much history you have, that's why he hesitates, hesitated to say something like twenty years ago, but whatever knowledge you have from a previous time to today.
Yeah, so my first job at SARC was, I started in two thousand and eight. So at that time, we had two counselors and one prevention educator. I think over the years, because I was in and out of connection with SARC from the time I left in two thousand and ten until I came back in two thousand and seventeen, funding and staffing tend to shift based on allocation of federal grants, opportunities, state grant opportunities. And so there have been times where there are two direct service providers, there have been times where there are three or four. At this point, in Lebanon County, we have three full-time therapists, one full-time therapist, and a director of therapy services who serves half their time as a direct service and other half as supervision and program administration. So when I started there in two thousand and eight, there were two full-time service providers. Now we have five. The area that has stayed really the same over all the time that I've been involved with SARC is the prevention education. So there was one prevention educator at SARC fifteen, twenty years ago, there's one ten years ago, there's one now. She has a ton of work to do, and has done really incredible work in the community, but we really could use more. I think the maps of production is what the proper cure. Unfortunately, that's where we saw the significant reduction in United Way support this year. So we went from sixty-five thousand in support of our prevention education program through the United Way two years ago, to ten thousand this year.
I just want to ask, did you do any research on other, either classified counties or just contiguous counties? What are they doing for programs similar, like what Schoolkill County doing for your half of your program up there? To give us an idea, maybe where we're on a date, or maybe we're in step, you know?
Yeah. So Schoolkill County is the one that I know, because we requested there too. We actually saw a reduction in support for Schoolkill County Commissioners. I believe when SARC took over services in Schoolkill County in two thousand and nine, the support was around eight or nine thousand. Last year, I requested thirty-five hundred and received two thousand.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. And they're a larger county than us.
Larger, geographically and politically larger population.
Yeah.
But it's rural, we're Lebanon County, it's not considered rural, that's their region.
So the money that we give, does it go to support Schoolkill County then?
No. We actually, because SARC took over services for a program that unfortunately went under because of some really concerning crimes committed by the executive director at Great Convicting Assistance in Schoolkill County, she can hustle federal funds.
Just a question, is the public meeting, just so you know?
It's prosecuted.
Yeah, okay, good.
Prosecuted, yeah.
Just a second.
Yep. So SARC had set up some really intentional firewalls for quite a long time between finances and services. So funds are ceded from county support in one county, or United Way, for example, would stay with the county's administration.
I just think that people know that we're giving money, they need that reassurance. I mean, it's, what you do is so needed, in my opinion. I don't know what we'd do without you, and I want to see you survive and thrive, but-
I want that too.
Yeah. I don't know that we can make up everything United Way isn't giving you.
Yeah, oh, I don't expect you to. I know we have a lot of work to do to make up for that shift and change. I did bring some information to share with you about some of our prevention programs. I know I've talked with some of you one-on-one about that work, because it's something that's really close to my heart, and it's really sexual to the mission it's on. And it's also where we've been saucers in reductions in funding this year. So SARC about two years ago made a really intentional shift to focus on the primary prevention of child sexual abuse. So instead of educating the community or raising awareness, or talking with children about what to do with sexual abuse happens to them. We made the shift to affect the attitudes and behaviors and skills needed to prevent the first-time perpetration of sexual violence. So keeping sexual abuse of children from happening in the first place. And we realized that if we wanted to do that work well, we needed to be talking with parents and adults in the community, because children are not responsible for preventing their own victimization, they're never at fault for that. And so these past two years, we've added some really incredible programs that I'm really proud of, and I'm proud of the results that we've seen through them. One is our Parents in the Nail Program, which talks with parents and caregivers about identifying the signs and symptoms of group behavior that other adults use to get to a point where they can abuse a child, and what to do about it. And when we started that program, we knew that there's the reality that there's a lot of intergenerational violence, there's particularly high-risk groups in our communities, that people who struggle with housing or poverty, for example, are extremely high-risk and vulnerable to people who perpetrate child sexual abuse, make themselves indispensable to their families, and are known and trusted often by the families and by the child. And so if we target these particularly high-risk groups or communities, so for example, SARC worked with housing authorities to provide programs on-site, to provide childcare with supportive programming that went along with the parents' programming. We applied for a small foundation grant to provide financial incentive for participation. We saw great follow-through with the program, and we actually saw great results with the program too. So in our first six months of implementing it, ninety percent of people who participated in this four-session, two hours each discussion-based program, said that they thought it was well worth their time. And in the second six months, one hundred percent of the people who participated said it was worth their time. So you really don't see that too often. So, you really don't see that too often. And that's just satisfaction when we look at the actual measurements and outcomes, like are people increasing their skills around preventing or intervening in grooming behaviors? Ninety-four percent of people said that they had increased their skills from when they started the program to finishing the program. We've seen similar feedback in our prevention programming that we do in schools. I, I mentioned, we're not doing the sort of one-time programs that tell children what to do if someone abuses them. We actually wanna build their skills and prevent them from going on to perpetrate violence later. So, it's multi-session, multi-session programs that deal with body identification boundaries and building the kinds of things that keep someone from going on to perpetrate violence and use observational assessments. I'm curious to see whether we're making more, and the fact is, we are in those areas too. We're really proud of this work, and I'd like to see it continue to happen.
I know there was some discussion, I think most of all of it was prior, that you were coming to SARC back with Tenny. But when we actually helped the United Way fund the two-one-one calling session, we expressed some question as to whether or not that's utilized to handle some of the calls, with the warm handoff and things like that. Is that still out of the question?
So, two-on-one, in our understanding of it, because it does operate in both the counties that we serve, it's meant to be sort of a warm-up for all hotlines. It's how people get connected with non-crisis-related services. So, how they find out where they can get information on their urgent issues or seek food access, finding ways to get connected with SNAP or health insurance benefits. When it comes to the work that we do through our hotline, it kind of serves two purposes. And one is that it provides the, in-the-moment counseling and emotional support to survivors of sexual violence, or their friends and family members who are impacted by sexual violence, to help to de-escalate any crisis that they're experiencing. That can be from recent victimization, or from traumatic response to something that happened a long time ago. That's slightly different from sort of a warm referral or an information connection that's actually providing the kind of intervention and emotional support and de-escalation that helps people to calm down from troubling and traumatic memories, nightmares, responses, or reactions that they may be experiencing. It's also a service that's protected by state statutes. So, in order to have confidential and privileged communication when talking about issues of sexual victimization, we need to be talking to a certified sexual assault counselor, and one that is overseen by the best-informed, best-trained services supervisor. And so, to be able to provide that through a two-on-one operator, there would have to be sort of a connection or, or an oversight by SARC for a similar service or program.
You don't have that kind of training?
Yeah.
I don't think we, my understanding of two-on-one is not that they would all have trained people for all these different issues that would be fall, or that they'd have housing, but that they would know how to connect with someone who had the training. That's my, you know, my understanding as a layperson of that. But, you know, I still go back to my thinking that if I'm in crisis, when you said about, well, it's not really, it's for people that, you know, with rent houses. But if, if I'm in crisis and I have an issue, the last thing I wanna be able to do is try to find a ten-digit number to, to call the right. And we may not even know that crisis is that, but if I can call two-on-one, then I can get to that place. That, to me, makes sense, again, as a layperson. Or the alternative of calling nine-one-one, which is not the appropriate call for many of those two-on-one. So, I think there's a, a discussion that should take place on, on all sides of this thing, because we're, we, we spend a lot of money on, on crisis intervention. It's like six hundred thousand dollars a year. So, there's a lot, you know, to, to talk about, I think. With the advent of the technology that's available, I don't see why it's not worth having a conversation about with the players who've been involved.
And earlier, you said that you didn't necessarily direct the eighty-five hundred that we're giving you to the, you know, the call program or whatever. I mean, how do you handle that? Do you handle those calls now with just staff or from SARC?
So, we have sort of a three-tier approach to managing our hotline, because it is twenty-four hours, it's nights and weekends. What we have is, when we have volunteers available, they might be the first call that, an after-hours call center, who can take the call and connect someone to the first-person on-call. Right now, our volunteer numbers are actually relatively low, so most of the time, it is a staff member who's answering the calls. Our staff, all of the staff that are on the county's SARC on-call rotation, myself included, I run about five days a month. And what that means is that if a call comes in from a hospital at two in the morning, or eight in the morning, or five at night, I, I have the one to go. I'll take the call, be in the hospital within twenty minutes, and, and provide support to that survivor. We also, so I mentioned, there's sort of two purposes to the hotline. One is that we track connection and support for survivors. The other is that it allows for other first responders in the emergency department or police station to get in touch with us, and a great way to process the work that come out, provide that support and confidence.
And I think my conversation with you might have been along the lines of if we can take advantage of two-on-one more, so that, not that we would wanna cut back our allocation, but that you could use it in a different, you know, way than to, for some of your others, fundraising shortfall or whatever. But anyway, I think it's worth the conversation. I, I'd love to learn more about the whole picture of all the hotlines that we have now in Lebanon County. When I look at some of the literature that is out there, we have four or five twenty-four, seven, you know, not all local, but some are state. But they're, they seem to overlap in terms of the, the focus of the hotline, you know? So, I think that this should be a conversation anyway, since we have limited resources and we have, you know, maybe an opportunity to redirect some resources to where it'd be more needed.
Yeah, and I'm very open to having that discussion. I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities, technology, that'll support that work and to work smarter, not harder, for sure. I see two-on-one as a great resource when it works well. So, a lot of the work that our advocates do, when someone comes in for support, many times survivors have a lot of questions about how the next day is gonna look. So, if a child, for instance, discloses that a step-parent abused them, the non-abending parent may be facing questions like, how are we gonna pay rent? How do we keep the electric on? Who's gonna pick the kids up from school? And so, when we have folks who are trying to figure out questions like that in the midst of a disclosure of sexual abuse, two-on-one can be a really useful resource, that it helps us to get connected and help people get information. We've also had some experiences where people wait on the line for a really long time when they call two-on-one, and we don't wanna see that, you know? It's quicker for us to make a couple of phone calls on our own to get to different resources and services. We're happy to do that.
Well, and I hear you, that, that's an alternative. But I think if you have an experience like that, you need to let United Way or whatever, let them know that we're having problems, because people, like, you're gonna take the alternative route and make our calls ourselves, I mean, that's not the answer. We gotta fix the problem, so that the, you know, all the laypeople that are out there that have first-time problems, call two-on-one and have the best response that we can, can give them. So, yeah, that's, there's a nice, you know, opportunity for improvement there. Yeah. Anything else?
So, you do, you typically do a letter to us a bunch of times, so can we do that again? Lay it out there, all right?
I will, thank you so much.
Can I just ask you one more question, since you do both counties, Schoolkill and?
Once again.
What is the difference in Lebanon to Schoolkill, is that, I mean, we often hear that Lebanon's percentages are higher in child abuse or sexual abuse.
Oh, um.
Do you know, can you say, like, one way's more heavily than another county or?
Yeah, so, I, I don't see that in the work that we're doing. I think that there's a lot of similarities in terms that, so, if we, I think we sort of seven hundred and fifty people for direct service in Lebanon County, about a third of them are children. We sort of five hundred and twenty people in Schoolkill County last year, about a third of them are children.
Okay.
And that, you know, that may be give or take, or, you know, some of the first, whatever, now, every year. What we have seen, that I will say is pretty great about Lebanon County, is there's a lot of good connection and communication between a lot of the child surveying first responders, so, just attorneys' office, children and youth, law enforcement, SARC. We all sit on multidisciplinary support teams together with the Children's Resource Center, which is a really useful way of covering everything around the table, making sure that we're looking at the whole experience of the child. You don't see that in every county, no, most of them.
I, I'm not sure if I understood correctly, did you ask going to come a bunch of times? Is that a number?
Yeah.
That's what I've done in the past.
Good, maybe this question isn't in mind, but did you have, did you have a number in mind?
I didn't come in with a particular ask. I think what we're trying to do is make up for, seeing if we have lost through United Way. If what you can give me is eighty-five hundred, I'm gonna take it and be really grateful for it.
It's better than Schoolkill, right?
Yeah, it is, it is. But if, if there's an opportunity to ask for more or ask for more, I think it would be well said to support crisis response services and the run-through.
Well, I think the, the questions that were asked here, if you could maybe have someone help you or do a little bit of research and just let us know how the problem may be different now, or the demands may be different. And I realize, just the mere fact that it's twenty years later, it costs more.
Yeah.
There's no question about that, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have folks there, for sure.
And you really don't wanna see me now, right?
I don't need to, no, but yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
When I saw the, the agenda for today, I thought, well, I guess neither one of us knew this was happening.
Well, I, I wasn't totally sure what I was coming in for, to be perfectly honest. I thought it was pretty interesting with Joelle, and I didn't, I guess I didn't understand what her work in the session was, but this is a good opportunity to be in front of all of you.
Would you do that, research?
Because it's public, that's why you can do it.
Could you just check on, like, Lancaster, and maybe a couple of the counties are in, in terms of supports? So, get a bigger picture.
And then include at least another fifth class.
Is there a mention, why in particular, that you'd like to see?
There's only like five or seven of them, so, somebody as close as you can, Franklin or whatever.
Thanks.